May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Viscarra?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Proten Man?
Here.
Mayor Sternquist?
Here. Okay. Item three, the invocation, and Pastor Kelty from Community of Christ Church, located at 5851 Temple City Boulevard, is graciously here again to provide the invocation, and we are so grateful.
Before I start, I don't think code would like where you're running that electrical wire through the door.
Oh.
We're working on it, sir.
I'm indeed happy to be here today as always. May we pray. O'er great Creator, it is with the deepest sense of sympathy, well humility, dear Lord, that we would come today to do this business for the city of Temple City. We recognize our own failings and weaknesses, but we also know too that as we seek to do your will to make this a better city and for the people in it, that your Spirit will be with us to give us that guidance and direction which we need to indeed make this a better place. We pray too for all the staff and gathered that they do might take their jobs seriously with a good heart to know to build a better city. This we ask and invoke in thy son's most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Jerry, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have a presentation today. And Peter, there you are. Hi, Peter. And Peter is going to introduce our recipient this evening.
Yes. Good evening. Mayor Sternquist, city council, city staff, Temple Cityans. I am Peter Choi, president of the Temple City Chamber of Commerce. And while this is technically the Chamber of Commerce report on the agenda, I will actually be ceding my time to my special guest tonight. But first, I just wanted to make two quick announcements. Our monthly Zoom seminar is tomorrow at four o'clock, and it's Reporting Unclaimed Property: What Businesses Need to Know. It's a presentation we're doing with the Office of State Controller Betty Yee. The State Controller's office helps reunite unclaimed property in California, including uncashed checks, wages, safe deposit box holdings, et cetera, with their rightful owners. So it's a free presentation. Learn how businesses can comply with California's unclaimed property laws and how the State Controller's office works with businesses in possession of unclaimed property and assists them in the reporting process. That's tomorrow, four o'clock. Just call into the chamber for the Zoom link. We do have a monthly Zoom, so just check the paper or check the Chamber office. We want to thank, there's been some great activities. So even as we nervously, you know, await LA County's decision on the return of indoor masking, as I always say, we support the business community. We're excited about the burst of energy that's happening, but we also keep an eye on the data. We want to, we've had some great grand openings. We really thank Mayor, City Council, especially our city manager, Brian Cook, for when you're able to attend the grand openings. It means so much to the business owners, and I always hear that feedback back. Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, for our most recent one at Camellia Dentistry in Camellia Square. It's really a big deal for them because you're putting your life savings on opening a business, but I always say it's a big deal for the Chamber and the city of Temple City because these folks have chosen to invest here in Temple City and not in the surrounding areas, which is a great thing. So thank you, and we look forward to more. In fact, as a quick mention about our newest member, Yi Home Appliances on Las Tunas, next to Phoenix Kitchen. Yi, Y-I, Home Appliances, not ovens and microwaves and induction stove tops and kitchen stuff, but air conditioners and humidifiers and wind machines, as it were. Yi Home Appliances, our new member, has a special promotion for Temple City residents because, you know, the weather right now is hot. And it will be hot, and summer is here. If you're thinking of buying an air conditioner, please check Yi Home Appliances. In fact, I really encourage you to look at what they call the saddle air conditioner. If you have an air conditioner that goes into your window unit, blocks the bottom half of your view, this one goes right over the ledge and it hangs like two saddlebags. So it hangs low so that your whole window view is available to you and not blocked. Really great sale going on, $50 off. But there are other sales and promotions and a special gift. Mention that you're a Temple City resident, say that the Chamber and sent you, and Serena will take great care of you. Yi Home Appliances, 9233 Las Tunas Drive. As much as we appreciate our new members for choosing to invest in Temple City, I'm really excited to be here tonight because we equally value, perhaps even a tad more, our longtime members and those who have stood the test of time, invested in Temple City, invested again maybe five years ago, invested by renovating their whole business so that we could do a grand reopening. This is the kind of thing that we love. In 1976, a 28-year-old graduate of Cal State and USC Dental School arrived in Temple City to begin a long and distinguished career as a voice for progressive dentistry and for informed patients, known to most as Dr. V. He has served the community with the mantra of making a world-class difference for others and making dentistry fun, and he certainly has done that. He is a very, very fun guy. He must have an incredible bedside manner for his patients, or did, I should say. He's received many honors, top dentist by Pasadena Magazine, 2011 to 2019, America's Top Dentist from 2008 to 2013. But he's also a person who gives back. Dr. V and his team have given back by volunteering six or seven community projects per year. He has also served on the board of multiple nonprofits, including Haven House of Pasadena, the first shelter for victims of domestic violence established in the U.S. He is also, as some here may already know, a prolific writer. He has three books out full of dental anecdotes, funny stories about life in the dental world. Can We Smile, Moller Jockey Memoirs, and most recently in 2018, The Most Interesting Dentist in the World. Many would agree. Dr. V has also written a weekly column for, as he puts it, "the local rags" for the past few decades, including our own very special local rag, Temple City Life, which is perhaps the raggiest of them all for the past few years. So we are here tonight because after 46 years, Dr. V is passing the drill to Dr. Kyle S. Lowe, a friend, a respected colleague, and amazing husband to Lena and father of two sons and a baby daughter, who will continue to expand Temple City Dental Care, located at 9929 Las Tunas Drive, expand Temple City Dental Care services to provide a wide spectrum of complete oral care for the community. There is nothing left for me to say except please give a warm welcome to a dear friend, a great Chamber member, an excellent dentist, and a really funny, smart, you know, proactive human being, Dr. Jack Von Bulo.
Welcome, Doctor.
Hi, and thank you, Mayor and the City Council, for giving me the opportunity to share some thoughts. I mean, the first thing I think of 46 years, I think the, it would have been 36 if it was up to Tom, because every time I see him at Wonder Cleaners, his first question is, retiring yet? And so we got past that. And I think of 46 years ago, and it kind of gave me a sense that I think we were a good fit for one another, Temple City and me and my new practice, was I was here about a week, January 1976, and I thought, running a small business after one week was pretty easy, but that's because I didn't know anything. And I had someone visit me. It was Dr. Bob Ewing, and Bob had been here for like 40 years. And I thought, it was something I never forgot. And it touched me because he basically came over, visited my office, introduced himself, and welcomed me to the town. And I thought, man, this is like Midwest stuff. It's like just the friendship extended, and I think he felt sorry for me. He was sending me patients that he had treated for 40 years. And at the time, when you're 28 years old, you think 40 is a big number, period, like just being 40. And so here I am at 46 years. And, you know, all I can say is thanks. I mean, all the opportunities. I remember the first opportunity I got to write for the Chamber paper. I think I was recruited after a dentist had run out of material after two months. And my only question was, do I get my picture in the paper? And they said, yes. And I go, well, sure, I'll give it a try. And we've been at it ever since. And I think they recruited me out of seeing my nasty letters sports viewpoint on Saturdays following a USC football loss. But I think that's where it all started. And so I just thank everybody for the opportunity and being able to practice dentistry and have the chance to grow. My original plan was to be here for 20 years and practice dentistry 20 years and then spend the rest of my life on the Amalfi Coast. So it did not work out quite that way. But the good thing was the last 26 years have been amazing. And dentistry has really transformed in a way that basically we can offer so much that not only changes your oral health, but your chances of having a greater quality of life over many more years. And each and every year, there's more for us to learn. And I think that's the secret that I come up with for just having the energy to now regret, after 46 years, I still feel like I'm missing out because the new guy, Kyle Lowe, is coming in, and there are new things that he can present that are super exciting. So I'm happy he's going to keep me around as a consultant. I always wondered what they really did, so now I can find out through experience. And I'm looking forward to doing that. I'll always be around to back up whatever we're doing in the community. And if the community ever needs me for anything other than judging a float in the Camellia Parade, that was my one venture where they actually assigned me something to do. And so I got there bright and early, and the floats were all decked out. And the first kid I saw was wearing a UCLA sweatshirt. And I said, today's not your day. I don't think you're going to win this year. And they never asked me to do anything again. So maybe it was part of a grand plan for me to be on the board and not do that much. But that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. And that's pretty much what I have, nothing but gratitude. I never dreamed I'd have this opportunity to come in and thank you guys for all you do, especially since back in the Dark Ages, Peter was reminiscing that I used to be quite critical of the City Council and what was going on in the city. And it's awesome to say that things are not like that anymore. I used to pray for retail. I used to threaten to run down the middle of Las Tunas Boulevard, wearing a, Las Tunas Drive, wearing a 2-2 and a UCLA T-shirt if we did not succeed in basically taking care of Rosemead and Las Tunas. And so that was done. Tom reminded me what I said, but I said, the statute of limitations has saved me once again, and I didn't have to subject the public to that trot down Las Tunas Drive.
So what are your retirement plans? Tell us.
My retirement plan...
On Amalfi Coast or no?
You know what? I'm going to get there. I'd like to travel. I've been there before, and it's a great place to be.
Come with me in November. This plan, trip is postponed.
November is Pebble Beach. So it's going to have to be a little bit different than that. But no, right now, it's basically, I'm still working in the office. I'm still helping Greek patients. My broker told me that, Jack, you know, and my lawyer's going to tell you this too, is you cannot spill the beans. You have to, until they sign on the dotted line, you cannot share what you're going to do. And I go, God, I used to think those guys were such jerks, my colleagues, when they did things like that. And now courtesy of my broker, I'm like remembered as the jerk that turned everybody loose at the last minute. But I will be going ahead and consulting and helping the new guy for the next, to the end of the year and finishing up. But the best thing about it is taking a walk. I do like 15,000 steps a day. I go to Pete's, I have Havana Cappuccino, I crack open a book for about an hour. When I get back, go hit some balls. I told Jerry I'm bound and determined to be the oldest guy to become a scratch player. And so that's on the agenda. And then, as I was sharing, I, with Peter, I'm going to sit down and write a book, like a real one. People have a morbid curiosity about dentistry, and there's definitely a lack of humor. And so I think that's a space I can fill.
Well, you must be a pretty good dentist because I've never heard the term "making dentistry fun" associated with dentistry. You know, it's like, it's like going to a lawyer's office. People don't want to go to a lawyer's office, but they have to.
That part I understand.
People don't want to go see the dentist, but they have to.
Okay, well, now you're getting down and dirty because now you're comparing us to lawyers.
Well, I would never do that, of course. Lawyers are here, you guys are up here.
And Doctor, now you have the opportunity, when you go to Jerry's and see Tom, to tell him, retired yet?
Yeah.
I know.
But thank you so much. We're so appreciative of the service you've provided to the community. I mean, I would probably be one of those people that you had a not-so-funny story about in your book because I'm such a reluctant dentist patient. I mean, I, it's just always been something. I mean, I go regularly, but it's never fun for the dentist.
There's always humor there to be found if you're looking for it.
So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we have a certificate for you.
Oh, awesome. Cool.
I believe it's right here. Yes.
Cool.
I'm recovered from COVID.
Oh, me too.
Okay. So in recognition of your service providing dental care to the Temple City community for over 35 years, we present you with this certificate. Thank you for being a voice for progressive dentistry and informed patients and for all you've done, especially with starting the domestic violence shelter. I just think that's an amazing commitment.
We're very proud of that.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
You're going to take a picture.
Okay. Want to get a picture?
Shucks, he would have been a fun dentist to go to. Okay. Let's see. Item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. This is time for anyone to address the council if you would like. Anyone? Okay, moving on. Item seven, the consent calendar. Do we have any comments from the council on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any objections? So moved. Okay. Do we need a roll call on that? I don't think so. Okay. Do we need a roll call? Take a yes, please.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay. Item number eight, public hearing, none. Unfinished business, none. Item 10, new business discussion and direction on city council compensation. The city council is requested to discuss and provide direction on city council compensation, and our city manager, Brian Cook, and Greg Murphy, our city attorney, will make this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, and members of the council. Before you tonight is your consideration, and is periodically can be done per state law for the council to consider increases in compensation. The last time the council did consider increases in their compensation was in 2012. Per state, state law does prescribe the manner in which raises can be given and the duration in which they can give it, be given. In this case, for this council, the last compensation increase was in 2012, which put your compensation at $720. And that is inclusive of all meetings, all activities, everything that the city council is doing. If there's any other bodies that are affiliated with the, with the conduct or the operations of the city, that's a separate matter that the city attorney can point to as well. But that is inclusive of all your costs and everything else. The council does receive some other allowances in terms of cell phones and other provisions, but that is the entirety of their compensation. State law does allow for a 5% increase every year. So in this case, as prescribed in the staff report, since you have not given yourselves an increase since 2012, you can prescribe a 5% increase cumulatively over those, over that 10-year period, up to an amount of $1,080 per month. That is the maximum that you can provide. That's the maximum the council can be compensated on a monthly basis. The council can choose to do something less if they, if they wish to do so, but you cannot give more than $1,080 a month. Two other important aspects of, for your discussion and consideration tonight. This, if you, if the council chooses whatever level of an increase the council chooses tonight, that cannot be applied until March of 2024, after the seating of new council members. So it is not, it is not retroactive. It is, it is going forward, but not going forward until the March of 2024. Part of the reason that is, that is state law that doesn't allow a current council essentially to give themselves a raise. So in this case, there would be three of you who have expired terms before March of 2024, and depending on what happens, and if you choose to run and are reelected, you would not, you would not see that increase until March of 2024 going forward.
Can I ask a question? Just before you go on. So does that mean, had we done this in February of this year, it would have gone into effect this year? Since there would...
Don't believe so.
There would have been an election in March.
I'll defer to my colleague.
So, correct. This year...
Because there should have been, or could have been, an election in March.
This year, with an election in March, you would have been able to adopt the ordinance, and as long as the ordinance was in place before the election, then following this, the swearing in of people for new terms, whether they were the same individuals or new ones, when those seats turned over and were filled anew, the entire council could have seen an adjustment. Yes.
Bad timing.
Yes.
Or good timing, whatever.
Good.
So, so then, I'm sorry, you, you wanted to talk some more. So I'll wait, I'll wait for that question. Go ahead.
So just, just to reiterate again, one of the common misperceptions about adjustments in salary, that they can't apply to seated council members. But again, in this case, with the Attorney General's opinions related to council compensation, it is very, and statutorily, at this point in time, you can only apply that increase starting in March of 2024. So with that being said, unless there's anything else I need to add from my colleague, we just wait for your direction, any questions that you may have.
I have a question for Greg. Greg, the, I know there's other cities, quite a few cities, I think, in the San Gabriel Valley that have, I don't know, they, they divide their council meetings up, and sometimes they put certain things on certain districts. And, you know, I think it's important for the public to know that our council is extremely conservative when it comes to any increases for council. And we're just very fiscally, you know, concerned about what salaries are. And we don't, you know, do any of that, but, but it is available. I would not recommend that. But if you could just share that, because I do want the public to know that our, how our city compares to others who have additional compensation that they make available to themselves.
Sure. Well, you're correct, Madam Mayor, that it's the case that many cities throughout the county and throughout the state, the council sits as the board of directors for another entity. Residents will remember that Temple City used to have a redevelopment agency. Redevelopment agencies paid their board members. And so each time there was a redevelopment agency meeting, which back then, before 2010, was pretty much every time that there was a council meeting, the council would, you know, would be paid extra for that redevelopment meeting. There are public financing authorities, there are public utility authorities or agencies. There are a number of different entities, and library authorities are another one. So it's not unusual to see in the course of a month that there may be one meeting that's a city council meeting and another meeting that's a joint meeting of three or four different entities. Now, I'm not saying that anyone's doing anything wrong. Those other entities are all authorized by statute, and statutorily, some of them are allowed to provide extra compensation, others are not. In some of them, the compensation is fixed by statute or fixed by ordinance of the entity, and in others, it's a little bit more free-flowing. So each, each city operates kind of in its own way, and each will have the council taking different jobs. But, but yes, to directly answer your question, it's not unusual at all to see council members serving as a group of five as the board of directors of one or two other entities, and there being some matter of compensation for that.
Thank you, Greg. Is there anything else, Greg, you'd like to add to the discussion?
I'm just, I'm here to answer any questions you have. Mr. Cook gave the big answer, and Councilman Chavez asked the big question, which is, when would this go into play? And it's after the next election, so.
Do we have any council questions from any of the council members?
So my follow-up question would be, so why now? Technically, it sounds like we can wait until December of 2023 to decide this issue.
I, I would say that it was, it's a fairly good time to do it. I would caution against waiting till December of 2023. It's the kind of thing, in the wake of some of the issues that have come up in Southern California and California in general over the last decade and a half, to really allow a lot of sunshine for this kind of thing. Put it out there, let the people know that when the council turns over, you've set a new salary for whomever might be on the council at that time. There may be people who would be angry about it and would want to run. But if those people didn't find out about it until after the chance to file papers to run came in, it could be a much bigger political issue. By doing it now, putting it out there, making it normal, it...
So wait till July of 2023?
You could do that as well.
I just don't see why we were talking about this, since it's not going to go into effect until March of 2024. That's almost two years from now. I mean, I don't know. It's just...
Okay, any other questions?
I have one question. So the, this, in the staff report, it says the maximum is 5% times 10 years? So what's that 10 years based on?
That 10 years is based on the last time the council made the adjustment, which was in 2012.
Oh, 2012, okay.
Yeah.
I can still remember Mary K. Keiko sitting in the audience, saying, we were all worried, well, she's going to ream us about taking more money. She actually said, you guys need to get more than that. Do you remember that?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that. That was in 2012.
One, one thing that that does bring up that, I'm sorry I didn't add earlier. So the maximum, as, as you can see in the formula the city manager gave, is $1,080 a month. Let me use simple math because I'm not very good at math. If the council were to decide to go to an even $1,000 a month, that extra $80 could never actually be recouped because the way the state law functions, you go up five, you can go up a maximum of 5% times the number of years since your last adjustment. So anything that you leave on the table at a time that you make the adjustment is left on the table permanently. And I do have another city council that also looked at this this spring, and we gave them the same advice, and they made the decision... we gave them the same advice, and they made the decision that, that they made in terms of how they wanted to do it, but that was something they didn't really think about. They thought, oh, we can go get it later. And so I wanted to make that very clear to the five of you, that if you do leave some amount on the table tonight, or when you, whenever you bring this forward, it will always be left on the table, and you'll start fresh, 5% per year from that future amount.
I, I can remember the discussion that we had back in 2012, and one of the main things that came up at the time was where do we stand in the spectrum, in the salary spectrum of surrounding cities? And if I remember correctly, we were relatively low in comparison to some other surrounding cities. Do we know what other cities have done in the last 10 years? Or, I mean, are we still on the lower end of the spectrum? Or do we have any idea? Have you guys, staff, looked into that at all?
As this is a discussion item that we brought forward, we didn't do a salary survey of surrounding cities, but anecdotally, you're on the lower end of the spectrum, but we could bring back something if the council needed it, a salary, a survey of our surrounding communities, so that you have, if you need that additional perspective.
Thank you. I'd like to open public comment. Is there any comment on this item? Okay, see none, closed public comment. Are there any final questions from any council member or comments? I don't...
Well, my, my feeling on this whole thing is, I don't think any of us up on this dais are doing this for the compensation. If we were, we, we wouldn't be doing very well. It, it's not about the compensation, I think. It's for, for some people, or, and I don't want to name any other cities, I'm sure it is, but I don't, I've never seen that here in Temple City, that, that has been a particular issue. And that's probably the reason why, I think, the last time we gave ourselves a raise in 2012, it had been probably close to 10 years before that had happened before. And now here we are 10 years later. So I, I'm looking at it from that, that standpoint, but at the same time, you know, it's obviously that our salary has not kept up with the cost of living, and in recent years, that's a lot of what we've been talking about as far as salaries for employees, looking at different things, and we're cognizant about the fact that, you know, our cost of living has gone up, and, and certainly we are not immune from that. And it's not really a whole lot of money when you're looking at the whole scheme of things. What was the, wasn't there a figure in this report about the, the cost, or something like, can't remember? Do you remember, Brian?
1,080.
I know, but I mean, what, what would be the dollar figure for the cumulative or the, I thought I saw some...
If the council were to adjust, if you, because you have to count for the full, fully burdened, it's the fully burdened cost, it's not just the salary, so it would be a little under $29,000 plus...
Yes, an increase of $360.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So, you know, it's kind of like torn between the two. Frankly, I could go either way. I don't, I don't, if we do it, great. If we don't, it's not going to change what I do for the city, and I don't think it would change what any of us up here do for the city, so.
Can we get a motion then?
Madam Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
So, you know, I'm speaking for myself, I, you know, it, it, it wasn't really, I think, as, as a council member, we're speaking not just for ourselves, we're speaking for other potential council members, candidates for council, and I, I think to Councilmember Chavez's point, we haven't done this for 10 years, and probably in another 10 years, anybody would revisit this. I, I'm a firm believer in, you know, while the council job is not something that we do to make a living, but I also wanted to make sure future candidates, at least for me, would not have to be burdened by the extra work that we put in as a coun, as, as council members, that they, you know, don't want to run for council because, you know, they, they really need to have extra income by doing other things. My personal belief is that this gives the council members an incentive to, to focus on the council work without having to worry about, you know, maybe doing a second job or third job. And the other part that I think council members, like the, Mr. Cook had, had elaborated before, this is sort of an all-inclusive compensation that we have from, from the city. Many of us may go to lunch, or may go to coffee with constituents, or drive to events and others. We never ask for compensation for any of that. As a matter of fact, unlike some of the cities perhaps, there's no spending accounts for us. We, we don't have, we don't have a city credit cards. I mean, what you see here is an, an all-inclusive stipend, if you will, for the time council members put in, and some of us put in a lot of time, you know. I do have a full-time job, so I, I have to balance my full-time work in council work, but I know many of us, such as our mayors, our current mayor, and, you know, and, and other mayors before, they spend a lot of time, spend 20, 30, sometimes it, other city, other cities included, our city council members outside our city included, they, some of them spend more than 40 hours a week. So I personally feel that the state law had provided a, a, a certain mechanism to increase, and doesn't benefit at least the current majority of the council. I am pretty okay in, in, in the increase, because it won't impact this for, for a little while. I personally do not need to see a survey of cities. And the other point I wanted to make too, is that in the consent calendar today, actually we have made adjustments to our staff's salary, both represented and non-represented as well. So I also think there's time with the high inflation, that, that we not only take care of our staff members, but we also take care of our city council members. Again, I don't, I'm not speaking about myself, but, but I do think we have a responsibility to take care of the current council, also to take care of future council members.
Can I, one quick question? So if, if we wait until next year, do we get another 5%?
[laughing]
We would, wouldn't we?
I believe, yes, sir.
Yeah. But if we do it now, we don't get that other 5% next year. I think that's what I heard Greg say earlier.
That's correct.
You, you wouldn't get it now, but...
We would get it in 2026.
Right. You would measure it from, whenever the next time a city council sat down to look at this...
Who came up with this crazy rule? I don't get it. I, I, well, maybe I do. I think the rationale was, they don't want people giving themselves raises right before the election, or something like that, I guess.
Right, right before the election, or giving themselves a raise right after the election.
Right, right, right.
And then the current city council has, in the absence of a recall election, they're going to be making, you know, $150,000 a year, and there's no real way for the residents to do anything other than host a recall election. So they, they say, put it out there, let the public know, and then, you know, it will take effect after the next election. And it's, it's been an effective way to, to increase compensation over time without it, it devolving into problems.
Well, and I think Cindy and Vince make very good points, and, you know, every 10 years is not going to get anybody's, under anybody's skin, and I don't think the amount is either, to be honest with you. I mean, we're not talking a lot of money here. One of the things, though, that, that we also should point out is that some of us who sit on regional boards also get paid for that. So that's in addition to what we're talking about here, that, that, you know...
And that also varies per...
Yeah, it varies, it varies per board, it varies...
Per board what the amount will be. I mean, for COG example, it's, it went from $50 to $75.
Well, I know when I went to the sanitation district meetings, it would cost me money to leave my office and go to that meeting.
And I always got lost there, so I drove around a lot too.
So, but yeah, you know, it all evens out, I guess, at the end. So like I said, I, you know, I, I don't, either way, I mean, whatever the council wants to do, I'm good with it.
Mayor, if I may? I, I guess, maybe since I haven't been on council or served on council as long as my fellow colleagues here, I, I kind of lack that perspective. So I, I appreciate you all sharing sort of what, what happened back in 2012, 2013, and sort of everything before that as well. Because when this topic came up, and I was reading through the staff report, I think my position on this is relatively neutral, just because it, it always tickled me that we can give ourselves raises, right? Because, you know, we're, we answer to the residents, the voters, right? They, they bring us into office, but then yet we have the power to raise our compensation. That, that idea always kind of tickled me in, in a way that I've never been able to personally reconcile. But having said that, I think the amount we are talking about really is, is very small. I, I always joke, the running joke, when I talk to residents or other people that, that don't know much about city council, they, they think it's a full-time job, right? So they see city council of Los Angeles, you know, those council members are full-time, paid salaries. I, I don't even know how much they get paid, but it's like a full-time job, basically, right?
How about the board of supervisors?
And, and so there are, there are other...
They're happy to give themselves raises.
Yeah. So I, I guess, when, when I was elected to council, I, I came in with this idea that I, I didn't want to become like those elected officials, not, not, I don't want to specifically call out other agencies. So I, I personally, I'm not, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't oppose it. I think, you know, everyone else here on council has given some very persuasive, convincing arguments. But like I said, I, I think at the end of the day, I, I'm pretty neutral on this. I think whatever council wishes to do, I, I think, I certainly won't stand in, in the way. I, I understand the rational and logic, and, like, Councilmember you, I think you, you brought up a point I didn't think about, was future council members, right? And I think I have heard, you know, when, I think all five of us, at some point or another, we, we talked to residents and others, and, and we're always looking for potential future city council candidates who can eventually take over when, when we all eventually step down. And the question at some point always comes up, where it's like, how much do you guys get paid? And when they find out, they're like, oh, wow, that's, that's like the low minimum wage.
I sometimes forget we get paid, because it's automatically deposited, and I, okay.
Yeah.
It is, but...
Yeah, so...
Well, I'm ready to make a motion if you...
Well, can I?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, just, that's, that's all.
William, are you finished?
Yeah.
You can go continue if you...
No, no, I think that was really sort of just sharing sort of my perspective on, on this issue, but I appreciate the discussion and everyone giving me their perspective.
I asked Brian to put this on the agenda. I had heard from a couple of council members that they were interested. We had talked about this briefly a couple of years ago, and it did not get on the agenda. But as far as timing goes, Tom, I think one of the things that I feel comfortable is asking Brian to put it on, was I appreciated the timing because we just had an election, and so it wasn't any, you know...
Well, we actually did not have an election.
I mean, well, we didn't, but we could have had an election.
I'm wondering though, I mean, I, I appreciate what Vince has said, but do we really think there are people out there that are going to think, you know, at 720 a month, I don't think I'll run, but at 1,080, I think I will? I mean, I don't know that that's going to make a difference necessarily, but it could. I suppose it could.
I mean, I don't like to...
I mean, you know.
You know, guess what people are, I don't have a crystal ball, but I...
There's something magical about the four digits.
I guess, I guess.
And I think also the reason I liked the timing was, was just, it's done, and we already know, like Greg had said, but there's three of us that potentially are voting on this tonight, that this could not even affect. We could not even potentially give ourselves a raise, because first of all, we don't know who ha, is for sure going to run in two years, and we don't know if there is, you know, if we're not as fortunate and we do run as the recent members that were elected, then, and we don't have an election, then, you know, somebody could run, and that compensation increase would be allowed for that, that person. So I think the timing is good, especially since there's three council members that are running, and to Vince's point, you know, there's no guarantee that three of us are going, I mean, I guess you could say there's no guarantee that anybody's going to be here, right? But, you know, so I think, I appreciate the timing with that in mind.
So you could do this every year then, I guess, right? Greg?
You could do it every year. It would be a little odd, since it wouldn't go into effect until after the election, but, but doing it every other year and doing 10% every other year would be...
Is that what most cities do?
Actually, no. Most cities do something more akin to what you're doing.
Every 10 years?
They tend to let it go six, eight, 10 years, and then do a big jump. And, you know, to your question about surveying...
No, I, I don't want to spend any money on a survey.
No, no, no.
If anybody knew. We all talk to people, I mean, Cynthia, you, you probably talk to more council members than any of us. Are any of them making $5,000 a month or anything, or what?
I can say of the 28 cities when I was president, there was probably at least 60% that made more, probably the other, you know, what is it, 30% made about the same as we were, and then there were maybe a couple of cities, very low percentage of the difference, that made about $500 a month. And they were the ones who were always asking. Everybody else, what's your compensation? Because we don't get compensated very much.
And I think it also, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, there are some councils that not only get paid salary, but they get allowances and other things built in as well. Is that allowed to do? Like, like I know some, don't some council members get like a phone allowance and a, maybe even a car allowance and things like that?
There, there are, the law is trying to move away from fixed amount allowances and rather pay for, you know, have, have sort of, say, a cap on how much of a phone the, the entity will pay for. Again, I'm bad with numbers, but $150 a month maximum, but you need to show that you're paying at least $150 a month to get it, and if you pay 183, then you're eating the 83. That would be in lieu of getting a device from the city. Same with driving. It would be, you know, the, the city would be willing to pay a certain number of miles a month at the then-current IRS rate, up to a total of, I don't know, again, say $250 a month, but then you have to be tracking your mileage to show that you're, you're putting it in. But yes, they...
Vince raised a good point, I think, that we don't get any of that, and...
You don't.
Many of us, especially if you're mayor, do put in some time and mileage, although we do get paid, I think, for going to conferences, I think we get paid mileage, don't we?
Yes.
Don't we get paid for mileage, reimbursed for mileage, I think?
Or just the reimbursement of your cost, if it's a rental or anyways, but it's related to...
It's all...
Related to your, your duties as a city official...
Right.
At a city sanctioned function.
Right.
Correct. And, and there are some cities where in the past, before the state laws changed, council members had discretionary funds of $2,000, $3,000, that you could really do anything you wanted with. Now those are limited to...
Water boards.
Sort of charitable, you know, yeah, donations, things like that.
And doesn't a superintendent have a discretionary funds, I think?
I don't know, but the upper district, they, each director has $5,000 discretionary funds to use at their, for whatever they want, if that's taking Jerry to lunch, or, you know, Pastor Kelty to dinner, or whatever they want. So, I mean...
Well, there's certainly, I think, the, a lot of, a lot of temptation for abuse always has been, and probably always will be. I think the thing that separates us is, obviously, we've never looked at it that way, and obviously, given the fact that we look at this every 10 years, even reinforces that. So, yeah, I, I mean, like, again, I still bear, I still can remember Mary Kekko, I thought would be the biggest, biggest opponent against what we were doing, and making the comment, "You guys should be getting more." Remember that, Jerry?
Yeah.
Yeah?
That was pretty cute.
Yeah. All right, well, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I would make a motion that we proceed with a legally statutory allowed compensation increase from 720 to 1,080 per month.
Second? Okay. Maybe we have the roll call, please? Okay, may we have the roll call, please?
Council member Chavez?
Yes.
Council member Visara?
Yes.
Council member you?
Yes.
Mayor Protenman?
I'll abstain.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay, so that motion passes. Item twelve, I'm sorry, eleven, update from city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just want to give a quick update on develop, on the development front. Members of the public may have seen some tenant improvements at the Kmart site, which includes, uh, the lot, the former Kmart slight, uh, site being pretty much split in half with a gymnasium on one side and a new grocery store on the other. On, on top of that, which is also of...
A gymnasium?
Uh, gi, yes, a gym.
Yes, I was, that's why I asked Brian to bring this to council, because I don't know how many of us knew there was a gym.
No, you mean like a gym like, uh, like a basketball court or a gym where you...
Uh, like a gym like a, uh, like a twenty-four hour fitness. Yes.
And do we know the name of the gym?
Uh, it's called Choose, Choose Fitness.
Choose Fitness?
Yes.
Is that going to be next to...
So it's split, it's, it's split in half. Um, so Choose Fitness is on one side and the restaurant, and the, um...
Supermarket?
The supermarket is on the other.
Are they separated?
They'll, they'll, they will be separated, yes.
So this is a done deal? It's actually app...
Um, yes, uh, it is. Um, it has by right abilities to do that on the site, so, okay.
That's a surprise for us.
Why are we just hearing this for the first time? I don't understand. Or did we miss it in some reports or paperwork? Because I don't remember anything about a gym ever being discussed going there.
I never heard of it before.
So I'm sorry for that, um, but I can give you some additional information as well.
Do we have pictures or anything?
Uh, yeah, we have some reports, we have some, some of the pictures and that, so I'm happy to, I'm happy to provide that.
Yeah, I think that's the kind of thing that we should be kept up on.
Is that a tax-producing business?
Uh, the, the gymnasium is not, no, it's not attached to, uh, in that sense. The supermarket will be, that will provide some sales tax space.
So, so this would be on the south, south, southern side of that property?
So if you think of where the, um, automobile, uh, repair area is...
Yeah.
It would be, it would be adjacent to that.
So that's a state.
That's the north side.
North side, yes.
Auto repair estate.
Yes.
Auto repair... Gym and then going south.
Yes.
Get your car tuned up and work out.
Are there any other...
And then go eat.
Would there be any more vacancies after this?
I do not believe so, but I'll double, I, I will double check with staff.
And, and what is the market going in?
Uh, it's the market, uh, I'll, I'll get you the exact name, but it is a...
GW?
GW, Great Wall or something like that, right?
That's what?
GW?
GW.
Same, same for Great Wall.
I think they, they have some, they have an existing store in Rosemead, I believe.
Rosemead, uh, and Valley, Valley and Rosemead.
You know where the post office is on Rosemead? Valley and Ivar?
And I think it's across the street from, uh, from the, from the, from the Rosemead City Hall.
Yeah, right across the street from City Hall in Rosemead, yeah.
Have you been there, William? Have you seen it?
It's been years, although I, I...
Should go take a look.
Yeah, I would say maybe that's not the best one to compare it to. I, I hope they do a better job, uh, with this one.
Yeah, yeah, I hope they do a better job than that one.
I think that one's been there a long time, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one's probably fifteen plus years, if not more.
Yeah, I certainly would like something a little, a little better than that.
And then I had one other question about the gym. Is the gym going to be a type of gym that competes with Planet Fitness, which is a low-cost gym? Do we know? Or is it going to be a higher-end gym?
My, our understanding is Choose Fitness is a little higher end than, uh, Planet Fitness type of, type of gymna, of, type of service. Uh, and then just, uh, the other update additionally too is, um, uh, notice has gone out, uh, planning commission will be hearing in, uh, next week about the mixed-use development along, adjacent to Cloverleaf as well.
Cloverleaf and what?
The Cloverleaf Bakery, uh, on Cloverleaf and Las Tunas.
Oh, I did say Cloverleaf.
Right.
Cloverleaf is still staying, correct?
Cloverleaf is still staying, but a wrapped, wrapped around it, well, it's wrapped around it will be, uh, forty-two units, um, and some ground floor retail. Blossom Walk...
Well, that's the request. It hasn't been approved yet, correct?
No, it's not approved, but it, there, there are by right abilities, there are some limited functions that the planning commission can look at in terms of the development, so...
And does that apply to us as well?
The by right abilities of, 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 from a...
So, so planning commission approves it, does that mean we're, we're, we're now we have nothing left to do?
If planning commission approves it, if it's not appealed, um, it could be, it could, it can be appealed, uh, there is the mechanism for any council member to bring that up, uh, through appeal, uh, and any member of the public, uh, can appeal it as well if they wish. Um, there, but there is a mechanism and a fee that's attached to the appeal.
Well, I'm assuming that whatever they're probably proposing as well is within the statutory rules of...
It's within, it's, it's within the statute, it's within the FARs that are existing. I don't want to go into too much detail to bias the planning commission decision, but it is within the FARs and the allowable density that's within, uh, the downtown specific area.
I'm sorry, are you still talking about the gym and, uh, you promised something else? I, I, I...
Uh, sorry, sir, I'm talking about, uh, the property at Cloverleaf and Las Tunas, near Cloverleaf Bakery, Bakery.
Well, if you had done, uh, council...
Yes.
You done, council member Chavez? Because I want to go back to the gym and ask, ask that. I have a question. You said that Mr. City Manager is a by right development, uh, the gym and the supermarket? But I thought that, um, uh, don't they have to apply for subdivision or somehow?
They did apply, I, I believe they did apply for a subdivision, uh, through the planning commission and I'll double check, I'll, I will double check on that.
Okay.
Uh, and lastly, thank you again for approving what was on the planning, on the consent calendar night with our bargaining units. Appreciate everything. I know, uh, thank you to the bargaining units for their work with us, um, and thank you to the management team as the unrepresented as well.
Brian, you were going to talk about the one across the street from Rosemead briefly.
Oh, sorry, yes. Uh, Blossom Walk, uh, the concrete and the foundation and subterranean parking is done. Um, so you're actually going to start to see the units built over the next, uh, year plus or so. Thank you to the residents in and around the area, um, but the hard, heavy concrete work and excavation is now complete, essentially capped, and now the units are actually being built upward. And, uh, hopefully looking for units to be completed and filled by, uh, mid-part to late, uh, twenty twenty-three. That is...
I have a comment. These are significant developments in the city, or I think of them as, as significant developments. Is there any way that we can stay out in front of this stuff before it, it evolves to this point? Like, like, like the Cloverleaf area there, uh, I think you and I discussed it one time in passing, or I did it with Scott, I don't remember. And, and I kind of knew something about it and then just faded out, but the council was never presented, never got a presentation on it or anything, or we didn't know exactly what was happening, what was going in. Isn't there, isn't there any way that, that we can know what's happening before it's happening?
I, I can't without...
On anything that, that's, the, the Kmart site's the same thing. I mean, that, that's a big deal for the city and, and for us. That's something I, I really would have liked to have known about, you know, whenever it started or it was contemplated.
I, I apologize for not thoroughly...
Brian, can, I just want the council to know too, I mean, I have been lax. So I know the onus is not just on you and, and staff, but, um, you are the one, the point person that we speak to regularly, sometimes daily. So, I mean, I know that it is, um, that we get the staff reports from the planning commission in our, um, packets and we get them from Parks and Rec and our commissions, public safety. So they are made available to, to us, but I know firsthand that, um, with everything that we have going on, it, it's not every time I get the packet that I look at every single, you know, agenda, item, other than really in depth what, what we're doing. But I would ask, that's why I asked tonight if you could do that, because when you mentioned the gym to me, I thought, I don't know if the rest of the council, because we talk so frequently, so even if, if there's some way that, like Peggy, if maybe you could even just highlight when there's something major like that in yellow or something, you know, planning commission agenda or, you know, on our packet, on our agenda, some way, just like it's something new. I don't know, or whatever you think, but Brian, if you would just remember to do that for us.
Mayor, may I say something about that? You know, I, I, I do agree with you on that. However, I don't think that's really our job necessarily to look through everything that's submitted to us. I think clearly it's the staff's job and I actually don't put the blame on, on our city manager necessarily, and then I'm glad we have, uh, some of our directors here. And I work for the county and I'm a manager there and we have ex-county manager. And then one of the biggest thing that we as staff, our job is to protect our elected. It's our job to inform them. For them not to inform us is totally not acceptable. I mean, yeah, great if I have it, but you know, I mean, one thing we talked about today, compensation of our city council, but, and then we talk about city, Alex City, we mentioned about board supervisor. All those electors have many people working for them. They have direct staff looking out at the entrance, looking at every single element of the, of their, of the electors' job. We don't have that. We don't have that luxury. You know, and many of us, like I have a very busy schedule, I work more than forty hours a week on my full-time job. Every day, virtually, I work seven days a week. I don't necessarily have that time. I look to city staff and I'm glad you guys are sitting here to hear me gripe if I could. That, that's really your job to flag things to us and keep, making sure your manager here knows about it and that, you know, Mr. Man, City Manager, I think you should escalate this to the council, because, you know, this happening, I think that the, the city council would like to know.
Well, I think we not just like to know, we have to know, because if I bump into a resident and they know more than me, shame on me for not knowing.
Yeah, Buck stops with me and, um, it's my responsibility.
Yeah, but it, that you cannot do it all. It's your staff that needs to step up a little bit.
That's it for my report tonight.
Aren't you glad you gave a report?
Sorry, Brian.
Sure you don't want to add anything else?
Not tonight, sir.
Okay. Greg?
Happy Fourth of July. Uh, I...
We didn't, the city didn't get burned down, so we're still here.
Not this year. So the legislature is taking the summer slowly or off as they normally do, but come August, we'll have a very good sense of what legislation is, uh, high priority for them. Uh, we'll be monitoring that in August and bringing it to you in September. Uh, there, it is no real hot litigation at this point. Uh, the big items, uh, would include litigation against the recent housing bills by different coalitions of cities. Uh, those matters are just getting started and there won't be any real news on them for a while. Uh, I, I know it's been the practice of the council in the past, um, and so I would just remind you now that the League of California Cities Conference is, I believe, the second week or first full week of September, uh, in Long Beach and is a great way to catch up on, um, things of a legal nature or a general nature of interest to council members in the city. And being that it's in our backyard, uh, I'd encourage y'all to go and I'll certainly be there myself and hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
When is that again?
Uh, I believe the second week of, it'll be the second Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of September.
Have we, have we gotten, I can't recall if we haven't seen it.
I don't recall.
We haven't gotten anything, uh, signups or anything on that. Maybe that's another thing we should follow up on.
Well, what's the one in October?
That's JPIA. But I'm sure they're filling up fast and hotel rooms and everything else are...
That one we got, that one I haven't noticed.
For JPIA, we have, yeah. But we haven't, I don't recall seeing any kind of invites for the, I could be wrong, but...
For, for which?
For the League of California Cities, which is the conference in Long Beach that Greg was talking about.
Tom, are, are you not the, are Vince alternate and the delegate for that?
I can't remember who the delegate, who the alternate is.
I forgot, one of us.
Yeah, but I, I don't recall getting anything from the city.
September seventh to ninth in Long Beach.
Last year was...
That's usually something that, uh, Iliana reminds us about.
I thought it's the mayor.
She may have done it already, I don't recall.
Last year I did it, I went to Sacramento.
Yeah, I think you...
I think it's the mayor.
Then I think it...
I'm the alternate, I think.
You're the alternate.
I'm, I'm actually looking through the emails, they, this, they, I missed it too. I, I guess they just sent it out yesterday.
Yesterday.
But it came from the league, right?
Yeah, i- it's easy to miss because the subject title just says early bird registration.
Maybe they just started them.
And you, you don't see the rest of the subject line, so it's easy to miss that that's the conference. I, I missed it too.
It is a good conference, it usually is. Again, it's close, so that makes it even better.
All right. I don't, Greg, is that, was it? Okay. Item thirteen, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Did we have any?
I don't have any meetings.
Okay. I think this might be a good time to, um, ask our school district, Lea Sans, which are council member Mann and council member Chavez, if you would please, if you're available, take part in that meeting with the school district that was sent out to us by Mary Ann. And what they're looking for is, they are going to be, um, having a forty-five minute meeting. I don't, uh, Brian, you have the date, maybe you could check on your phone. And it's to work with a working group to see what we would like to give input, what input we would like to give regarding the hiring of a new superintendent. So they've reached out, they've reached out to Brian and the, the full council, it was just a day ago, so you might have missed that, um, email also.
It was an email from the school district?
I, I think they just sent it today.
Oh, it was today? Okay. So, um, if, do you think you'd be available? I don't know if they offered two dates or one.
Mayor, Mayor Sternquist, they offered multiple days for a, a quick Zoom session for, so we can coordinate with...
So will you, would you both be willing to do that?
Yes.
Well, it depends on the day and time.
Okay. Well, Brian will work with you to give a time that's, um, you're available.
Do they want us to be part of that?
Yes, it was sent out to each council member. But I figured, we don't want three council members on that meeting, so you two have been part of this, um, ad hoc committee. I think you're the most, um, what's the word I'm looking for? The best candidates to serve on it.
We're still waiting to get a standing committee meeting with them. That's been like pulling teeth.
Well, if, if I can, because I, I was actually just talking to Mr. Cook about that just a couple hours ago, because it, at least the way that they send us the, the email, it was sent to all five of us on council, so perhaps we can maybe let Mr. Cook get some more clarity as to what exactly they're looking for. Because I, I kind of see the standing committee as a, a body that's represent, like we would have a clear idea of how we would enter that meeting to represent council's interests, whereas this almost seems like, I don't know, I, I think they, they, they're looking at it maybe as an individual, not necessarily as a body, but I, I don't, I, I certainly don't mind serving, you know, we're on the standing committee, so I, I'm more than happy to be part of that if, uh, if the schedule allows. But I just want a little bit of clarification. But I just want a little bit of clarification.
When did you say you got that, today?
I got mine yesterday, but I didn't see you copy on any of it.
They sent it at twelve noon.
I'm looking through my emails, I don't see it.
I can give the school district a call tomorrow, see if they're looking for this meeting to represent as Mayor Proten man as individuals or the organization as a whole. So the city as a whole, the city council as a whole, I can reach out to them and see if that's what they're looking for, and then I can send individually to each council member that feedback.
Sounds good. Okay. All right. Council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Council member you, anything?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to go back to something we said earlier, you know, we talk about staff job and all that survey, but still, on top of that, I just want to add to it. We actually have two items today that I mentioned earlier that we approve in the consent calendar, and I, you know, both of them had to do with staff compensation, both represented and non-represented, and I just want to say, take this opportunity to say that we appreciate the staff's work, we thank you, especially during the COVID. We don't normally do salary adjustments, and we do it at a certain, you know, cycle, and I think this time around, we have a chance to really, I believe that what we have in front of us is a very good package, and is a very responsible, financially responsible way, and like the mayor had mentioned before, we're very physically conservative, but yet at the same time, we appreciate what staff is doing, and so we appreciate your service. So I just want to take this opportunity to say, you know, thank you for working with us, thank you to the represented, to work with us, and for the non-represented, I wanted you to know, we appreciate your work, and that's why we want to make the similar adjustments as well, and really, you know, in this tough age of runaway escalation, I think what we have is a very responsible package. Thank you.
Council member Chavis?
Thank you. Well, I don't really have much, I just want to give a quick shout out to our tree staff. Was it last Wednesday night, I think? Last Wednesday night, I was on my way home from the Little League game, it was around ten o'clock, and my street was blocked off by the sheriffs, and of course, you get all worried about what's going on, and an eighteen-wheeled truck apparently had decided to come down Freer.
A what?
An eighteen-wheeled, big semi truck decided to come down Freer, going from east to west, and didn't know where he was on his way to the Driftwood Dairy, apparently, and sheared off a huge limb on one of the trees just east of my house, sheared it off, it got stuck between the cab and the trailer, I mean, it was a huge, a huge limb, and he was, and he stopped right in front of my house. So there were sheriffs on each side blocking the street, obviously, because they didn't want anybody coming through, and long story short, they, the driver apparently got in hold of a tow truck, who was special kind of tow truck, came out, actually had to lift the trunk off of the tree, off of the truck, and then, shout out to our guys, Brian actually came down from his home, and it was, what, ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night by that time? Our tree guys, who was it, Jesus, who else was there? And.
Jesus, Adrian.
Who was it?
Josh.
Josh, yeah, the three of them came out almost midnight with all their equipment, and actually tore up the tree, I mean, got rid of the tree, it would like, it never happened, but that was like, by the time everything ended, twelve, twelve-thirty at night. I have pictures, I'll show you, it's crazy, it was the craziest thing I've ever seen. But staff, they did a great job, I mean, they were out there and they got everything cleaned up, and the guy was saying, well, this is the way the GPS brought me, not thinking, well, you're on a residential street, you know, he should have been on, obviously, Lower Zusa, which is built for those big trucks, but Freer is not, and it's funny, though, the people who owned it, well, it was a city tree, but they never came outside, I don't think, I don't even know if they were home, but it's like a bluey, so, whole thing, but a little drama for a Wednesday evening, but staff did a great job, they really did a good job, so, shout out to all of them. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Council member Iskara?
I really don't have anything, but I would echo what council member you said, I completely agree, and I think we put together a pretty good package, and it was relatively painless. So job well done, Mr. City Manager. Thank you. That's it.
Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much, but I do, I didn't really comment earlier when we were talking about critical city reports, but I do want to say I agree, I think it is odd for us to maybe not know about certain things ahead of some other people, whether it's residents, business owners, whatnot. But I guess in Mr. Cook's defense, the mixed-use development at Cloverly, I believe, you have mentioned to us before, but I think maybe for us over time, we kind of forget exactly how, I mean, for a city of our size, any kind of mixed-use development is significant, right? And I recall, we, when I had asked them about it, the thing that always, that I always found strange was, how do you fit a mixed-use site in that L-shaped property and leave Cloverleaf intact? So I appreciate you saying that that's coming to the Planning Commission, so that's definitely on our radar now, because I'm certainly looking forward to see how they're going to try to do that. And it's just small things, like even the plaza adjacent to it, where they had the facade that collapsed, right? So all these things that might seem small in the context of maybe larger cities is actually magnified several times when it comes to us, because, you know, our commercial business area is tiny compared to other cities, and so when something, we've been talking about the Kmart site for how many years, right? And now that there's finally new businesses going in, I think all of us are pretty anxious and want to see that process succeed. We don't want to be caught flat-footed on it. So I would appreciate, kind of like alluding to council member you's questions, there's some issues with those types of businesses that perhaps you can report back to all of council. But having said that, what was I going to say? Oh, I do want to highlight, you know, some of the customer service that our planning staff does, there was a resident that reached out and had some issues with certificate of occupancies and inspections, and I just want to say, planning staff did an excellent job in responding and trying to do everything they can to try to accommodate their schedules. So I think it's some of these little daily things that maybe elude our notice, and I'm always a big fan of, if I know about it and I get positive feedback from the resident, I always want to share it with everybody. So thank you, thank Director Remers and all of the planning staff for that. That's all I have, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I forgot. Brian? What is our posture or our rule on dogs in the park?
I think Mr. Matsumoto is here, but I believe on leash, they're fine, off-leash, I think it's a different story, but I'd rather go to the subject matter expert, Mr. Matsumoto, who can tell you directly, circle.
That's come up as an issue, you know, I'm involved with the Wednesday night festivities, and arguments have been erupting, and so.
Yes, they occasionally come up, I'll let Mr. Matsumoto, if you don't mind.
That's correct, City Manager, dogs are allowed on leashed, six-foot leashed, dogs are okay on the park, unleashed dogs are not per our city municipal code, so I think in the past, there may have been some programmatic implementation of no dogs allowed as part of the concert series, but that doesn't coincide with what's on the municipal code. So it's something we do monitor, and if there's any issues, we, as staff that's onsite, can go address it and talk to anybody that may have some concerns. So we would definitely go out there, and if you or if other patrons have some issues, we can go and talk to the owners and see if we can have some resolution there, but dogs on leashes are allowed on the parks.
I personally didn't have any issue, but I had to referee a couple of disagreements out there.
Please let us know, and we can do the refereeing out there.
Okay. So they can bring their leashed animals to concerts in the park or wherever else?
Correct, yes.
In the past, we didn't allow it, that's why perhaps there was a confusion, it's been a few years, though, already.
It's probably been maybe four or five years since we've enforced that.
I remember when Kathy Burrows was here, she told me that we were allowing dogs now.
Right, so it's been a few years, yes, yes.
That's all.
Okay, I have a few things. Our first fuel cell double-decker bus arrived and has been fueled at a fueling station that has been put on the Cal State LA campus, I'm not sure exactly where, but that's something new for Foothill Transit, we're excited about that, and we've ordered nineteen more fuel cell buses, so we'll have a combination of fuel cell buses, CNG buses, and electric buses.
Which are the ones that we're having trouble with?
The Proterra electric buses. Those have been a problem since day one, specifically the ones that we're operating in the city of Doherty. The second thing is with our mosquito and vector control district, we have a new director, and his name is Jason Farnett, he was the interim director for the past six months, so we just brought him on, and he's thrilled to be part of the organization, a good guy, he's been there for about seven years and worked under the interim for some time. SCAG, and this is for Brian for staff, SCAG has implemented about two million dollars in mini grants for bicycle safety, and I thought it was something that maybe the youth commission could be involved in, because you don't have to actually be a city, you can be an organization that is under a municipality, so it might be something that they can get involved with, and I believe there may be about fifty thousand dollars, and it's to put on, they, the organization that gets awarded the grant would partner with SCAG employees, and they would train them, give them all the materials that they needed, so it might be worth looking into that, and that was just at our last SCAG meeting that that was introduced, and I believe the applications have to be in by the end of September. So take a look at that. The, I asked Brian, Brian, we haven't spoken today, but regarding the, if we had an ordinance in place for our commercial areas, such as we do for residential for code enforcement, whether it's, you know, dilapidated, you know, awnings, or things that just look in disrepair, so Greg, maybe you can, you know, see what we have in our code so that we can address that? I mean, I think it's important to address it, obviously, in our residential areas, but when I was walking down Lost Tunis, there's quite a few buildings that really could use some fixing up or maintenance even, so Brian, if you'll.
And we can provide the council with an update on that, I can send the memo, what's on the existing, what's in the existing municipal code, which we can address with certain areas of maintenance we can't address, but I'll be able to provide that in a memo form to the council.
Okay. And then, you know, just getting back to like what Vincent regarding the things like the gym, I mean, I do think it's, you know, essential that we know these things and that they are not surprises. You know, I will say that when, Brian, when you first came on for probably about the first couple of years, we had our directors here at our council meetings, and we've gotten away from having them, I mean, I don't know, Greg, in your other cities, are the directors present, or is it just, you know, depending whether or not there's something on the agenda? But it seemed that it was always nice to have them here, because if we had a question or they were here, they were able to respond.
I would say it's more often than not, directors are present when they have something on the agenda.
Okay.
That seems to be the direction that most places are going these days. In particular, directors who have their own commissions that they work with at night a couple times a month, once or twice a month, it just winds up being something where if it doesn't look like they'll be needed that night, they don't tend to be there. If we need to, if we have items that potentially cover a number of different areas, you know, that's something we can look into.
Okay. It is nice to see them here and have them available, because something, sometimes one conversation, you know, sparks something else, and then they're not here, and then we possibly don't get a response because they weren't here to listen in on that, but I don't know, what's the process, Brian, after council meetings? Do you bring an issue that we have a concern about to the individual director, and then they find the information, give it back to you, and then we're notified?
Well, certainly, every Wednesday, I have a standing meeting with the executive team, and for example, tomorrow, we'll talk about tonight's council meeting, some of the issues that were brought up tonight, obviously, will be discussed, and if there's any follow-up items as well, I work with the city clerk and the respective staff members to address those issues that were brought up. Obviously, tonight, there were several issues that were brought up, and I'm happy to bring those back to the team, and as a team, we will work together to either resolve those issues or improve processes and procedures in which to address them.
Okay. So I'm happy, I'm just happy to know that there's a process in place where it's directed. I think that's it for me. We move to item fifteen, we do not have a successor agency to recess to, so item fifteen just is not being addressed. Item sixteen, we have additional public comments, is there anyone? Jing? Oh, I have your card, Jing. Thank you. And that was on item six, I'm sorry, I missed it completely.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, my name is Jeanne, I'm the library manager at the Temple City Library, I want to give a brief status report for our newly opened Temple City Library. Since we open, since we had the grand opening on June sixth, June seventh, the library get busy and busy every day. So in June, we processed over two hundred new library car application, we also issued over two hundred fifty library car replacement, so that's by just, in June, we have almost four hundred, four hundred fifty library car applications. And also, we started our summer discovery program, traditionally, we know is a summer reading program, so that's starting June first, so we have about five hundred people signed up. I wasn't able to see the whole county wide, but definitely, I compared with our neighboring neighbors, we are the top one again, so I'm very happy for that, and we also had the lunch in the library, every Tuesday to Friday from twelve to one, we offer lunch for teen and children, free of charge, and then we started with fifty meals as a beginning for the first week. All the meal was gone within the first ten minutes, so we have to increase to one hundred, still the same thing, it's finished within the ten minutes, and you should see the line. And you should see the line, um, waiting outside because on Tuesday and Wednesday we open twelve. So people were lining up, um, on our walkway even before we open, there's a long line. And I wish we could do offer more, but you know, we have small refrigerator, one hundred is our maximum. Uh, we also had our paid program, uh, it's, we, we, last week, with our magic show, we resumed our Smartypants Storytime as well. So because we're still in pandemic, we limited the, uh, the attendance, so you have to pre-registration. So it's filled up within a second, so it's very busy with the, uh, library. So I'm very happy to say, um, we also received the pa- uh, positive comments from the community, they love the library, it's very bright. It's all this state of art facility and AC works, so, uh, everybody was very happy. So I'm very happy to say, you know, our community was really useless community. And upcoming programming, we still have our summer discovery program, the last day, uh, we run as August fourteen. Lunch at the library, we're going to serve until August fifth. And also, we're going to resume our Smartypants because we had four section and it will take two weeks we, uh, break. And then we're going to bring back, uh, on August the fifth as well. And then we, in August, we have August third, well, another paid program is a gardening program for kids. Uh, that's also, um, all this program need to be like a pre-registration. So, um, I just encourage the community to, uh, check us out and thank you again for all your support.
Thank you, Jing. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to make a comment. Today, I, I, uh, one of my projects was to clean out our office and we had something like forty years' worth of children's books for my daughters and for my grandkids. And so I filled up two great big old bags with, with, with these books because there's no more kids, you know? And those books just take up a lot of space. So I filled up the bags and I took them up to the library and they weren't accepting the books, but Jean saw me there and she accepted them for the library, so now all my kids' children's books are in our library. Thank you for your help.
Thank you, that's a very good, all these are very good, you know, it's amazing, for how many years?
At least forty years.
Yeah, for you.
Wow.
It's amazing.
Okay. All right, is there, um, anyone else? No? Okay. I'd, I'd like to close our meeting in memory of Doherty's council member, um, Zidal Paris Karachi, who passed away recently, they had a memorial service for her at City Hall on July sixteenth that was extremely well attended. But she had served the community of Doherty as a council member for over twenty years. She was one of the youngest council members that, um, they've ever had and I believe she was the first Filipino Asian American council member to serve there. Very well loved by the, the staff, the high school students and, um, the school, she was very engaged in her city. So, um, on, excuse me, on behalf of our council, I'd like to see if we could please send out, um, something to her city council members and, um, her family. They've had a really tough time, this is the second council member that they have lost in a very short, uh, amount of time. So our thoughts go out to them and to her family, she, um, leaves her husband and her, um, young son, Jack, who she was absolutely adored, I believe he was in first grade, first or second grade. So with that, we are adjourned.